At about 8:34, and we'll begin first with the pledge of allegiance. Caleb, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands for our nation.
Okay, thank you. I'd also like just to indicate that proper notice has been given as required by the Ohio Revised Code 121.22. So we're going to proceed through the agenda, and first is approval of our board meeting minutes for December the 8th, 2020.
I'll move approval of our board meeting minutes from December 8th, 2020. I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? That motion carries. Next is a hearing that has been continued from our previous meeting, which was in December, regarding voter challenge, registered voter challenge, and I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yes, we have present both Mr. Janus, who filed the challenge, as well as the two voters who are the subject of the challenge, and our administrator Chuck Eckert is prepared to give a summary of the challenge to refresh the board's memory from last meeting.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thanks, Chuck, for doing that.
Good morning.
Morning.
So you have been provided with a challenge voter spreadsheet dated November 30th, 2020, by Mr. Janus, and a brief summary, you will recall that the challenges were presented to the board on December 8th. There was a motion to table until January 12th, and that, of course, meeting was, of course, rescheduled until today. On December 11th, and again on January 7th, letters, copies of the challenges, were sent to both challenged voters at their new address, and notification via letter was sent to Mr. Janus as well. I want to point out that on December 17th, we received change of address, registration change of address forms for both Jenna Lee Hickey and Michael Hickey, and subpoenas were reissued to their new address on January 7th. We had confirmation of service on January 11th, and as Ms. Boland said, they are here today.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, ma'am.
So both, both of the challenged voters are here today?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
So we have, we have received change of address forms for both, right?
Yes, sir, we have for both.
So whatever issue may have existed in the past has been resolved, at least from, at least in terms of where they ought to be properly voting, right?
That is correct, yes.
Any more discussion? Sharon?
Well, do we want to hear from Mr. Janus?
Let's Mr. Janus first, okay.
On his challenge, Mr.
Do you have any comments, Caleb?
Nope. Nope.
Okay. Mr. Janus, you could step to the podium, please. Good morning. Go ahead.
When he disbarred me.
Please. Swear, ma'am. Would you swear, ma'am, please?
Are you talking?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Subsequent to the last meeting, which Mr. Eckert talked about earlier today, I received an electronic communications a couple of days before Christmas of 2020. One of the plaintiff's fathers, Jenna Lee Gavin Hickey, Sean Gavin, he asked me about how this could be resolved. Kind of surprised that to this state neither one of them have contacted me. I informed Mr. Gavin. Oh, Mr. Gavin also indicated that both his daughter and his son-in-law would have to take off work. He wanted to know how this could be resolved. Backed by email response, I responded that they failed to answer a subpoena. To me, that was a very serious matter. I said, I briefly gave a brief summary of what I testified under oath before all of you at the December 20 meeting, excuse me, 2020 meeting, and I informed him that if each of the plaintiffs would be willing to give me a signed dated notarized affidavit indicating the date of which they moved from their Deer Park, Ohio address to their Anderson Township address, I said that would be based, that would how I would base how this would be resolved. As you and I speak, and we're all here today, I've never received any additional communication from Sean Gavin or Michael Hickey or Jenna Lee Gavin Hickey on this issue. Also, I was informed and I apologize, either by the deputy director or the director since your last meeting, of a change of date for this meeting. I followed up and I said, what was the reason for the change of date? And they indicated apparently some meeting times and conflicts scheduled with one or more of you. And I also received a communication from Administrator Eckert, excuse me, indicating that it would be changed. Basically, I stand, oh, in the past, when I filed voter registration challenges, to my knowledge, all of my voter registration challenges, when I filed, let me rephrase that, to my knowledge, many of my voter registration challenges, when I filed, they apparently would contact your, this office and file the appropriate paperwork with their new, new address. And often you would ask if I'd be willing to withdraw my challenge, which I typically did. And subsequent to the last meeting, I informed deputy director and the director here of that issue, and I said, to my knowledge, this was the first and only one where they went ahead and voted long after the closing date to file the change of address, and they had moved. Just on my own initiative, periodically I would check the voter registration through the Hamilton County Board of Elections website and the Ohio Secretary of State's website, which is known on the web as Ohio Voter Lookup. Around January 11th, 2021, on the Ohio Secretary of Website, Ohio Voter Lookup, I became aware that Jenna Lee Gavin Hickey and Michael Hickey had both changed their address from a Deer Park, Ohio address to the Anderson Township address. Normally, I'd be, I'd be willing to withdraw my challenges, but as I said earlier, and as a paralegal, and when I was taught by peers, lawyers in class, this would be called case precedent. And I guess my primary issue is, if this is allowed to stand, then I think anybody could vote from any ward or precinct they wished in Hamilton County, Ohio. I think that's very important to me. I believe if that was allowed to happen, and particularly in reference to our most recent 2020 Ohio Fall General Election, I think your office would be inundated with a lot more paperwork, a lot more mailings, a lot more filings. I think it's very inappropriate. So I think it's important today that, I would like to hear from the vote, from the board here, if you believe it's important that people vote from the address from which they live, not from which, let me rephrase that, from the correct address of which they live, not from which they want. In a particular note of me, since they're apparently, the two plaintiffs are both former residents of the city of Deer Park, I believe in Deer, the city of Deer Park, Ohio this year, there are multiple openings, open seats, if you will, for elective offices. In the past, it was kind of ironic, in Deer Park, Ohio, at one time, the city council president moved out, but for months and months, he failed to change his voter registration address, along with the former mayor. Is it required that once someone moves out, they change their voting address? No. But my purpose or my belief is, they wanted to retain that so they could vote again in their own local elections, which I believe is wrong, once they moved out of the area. The former city council president, former mayor, once I filed a challenge, they quickly changed and corrected their address to a non-Dear Park, Ohio address. So to continue on with this one, or these two, I believe that this is improper, incorrect. And I would like your input or your vote on if you agree with me or disagree with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Janus.
Can I correct one thing for the record? Mr. Janus, you, as many as, three times, I think, referred to the Hickeys as plaintiffs. I just want to make sure the record is clear that they're not plaintiffs in any matter that I'm aware of. Just wanted to make sure the record was clear. Do you have a reason for calling them plaintiffs?
I apologize.
Fair enough.
I would be the plaintiff, they would be the defendant.
Fair, yeah, I just want to make sure.
That was my error.
Thank you. I just want to, again, make sure our record is clear about, about what's happening and who, if in fact, I'm not even sure you're a plaintiff, you're probably even more of a petitioner, but anyway, we could.
That's what I'm thinking.
So, okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Janus, so, while I've got the floor, Madam Chair, so it's clear, you're not withdrawing these challenges, even though they've corrected their, their change of address? They've, they've processed the change of address?
I did, and if I may add one last thing, I did make mention to this, I believe, in my electronic communications with the director and deputy director of that, and I said something to that effect, that even if they changed their address with your, this office before we come to your next group, I wanted to proceed, I would not withdraw, and I wanted to have your body vote one way or the other on the issue. I think that's very important.
Fair enough.
Okay. So there's a question on the floor, and I'd like to hear from the Hick, Mr. Hickey? Jenna Lee and Michael? Jenna Lee first, please, your response, and could you swear, ma'am, please? Thank you.
Hi. So, yes, we did not change our address, but these papers, I brought my contract, we did not gain occupancy of our Anderson home until October 15th, and we actually lived in Deer Park until then, at my parents' house at, well, it was next door. We were 4125, and they were 4123. So, also, I've only ever voted at that address, so I wasn't aware how long I needed to, or how long I had to change the address, so.
So what date did you say you moved into the Anderson address?
October 15th. And I have our contract with the sellers here, if anybody needs to see it.
And what date did you vote here?
I don't, I don't know.
You remember?
I'm sorry. I'm sure it was, I mean, I think it was after the 15th.
Ms. Boland, do we have the date?
Yes, our records indicate that, that was on October 30th.
Okay.
That both voters voted early in person at the Board of Elections on October 30th.
Yes. Nothing intentional, we weren't voting for anything in particular in Deer Park, it was just unaware of how, of how all of it works when it goes with changing your address and all of that stuff, when it comes to this.
Not on your.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Hickey.
You're fine.
If I could ask a question of legal counsel, please?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Stevenson, with respect to a voter challenge, what is, what are the options available to us? My understanding is to challenge them at the address identified in the challenge, is that correct?
That would, yes, that would be correct. Obviously, you can uphold the challenge, you can deny the challenge, and it's at the particular address that was listed in the challenge.
Can we deny it? Sorry, do we?
Well, and, and we have a change of address on file now. The Hickeys have changed their voter registration to the Anderson Township address, so even though I think technically the challenge has merit, it's, it seems to be moot to me at this point, since they have changed their voter registration to the Anderson address.
Well, Chip, I would, I would agree that the challenge has merit, particularly in light of the fact that they actually moved on the 15th and, and didn't vote until the 30th. The question is, is what are you going to do about that?
Yeah.
I mean, in terms of, in terms of, you have two things that you have to consider. One is, what are you going to do about the fact that they, they actually moved before they voted? And the second one is, what do you do about the challenge?
Well, the, the item before us is a voter challenge, correct?
That's correct.
And I, I believe that there are ramifications beyond this, and, you know, further questioning, you know, without being advised of their rights. I mean, I just, I'm concerned about that. So, I mean, I, I mean, from my perspective, I think we should deal with the voter challenge issue.
I think that's, I think that's a fair way to resolve it.
The facts are in front of us, and I would suggest we, we not proceed with, with questioning of the Hickeys at this point.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Stevenson, just quick, if I'm piecing this together correctly, they moved to the new address after the close of registration, and then they came here and voted at the Board of Elections early. Technically, what probably should have happened is, is they should have indicated that they were now residing at a new address, in which case they would have been asked to vote a provisional ballot, which would have then updated their registration to that new address.
All of that's correct.
And so then that raises the question as to whether or not, in the process of voting here at the Board of Elections, the subject of the fact that they had moved to a different location never even came up for discussion. And I can easily picture that the voters might not have fully understood that they needed to say that at the time, but the question I guess I would have is, was that even ever discussed that day? There's probably no way to know.
Honestly, we didn't have any idea. I mean, that's why we voted here instead of in Deer Park, but we really didn't have that work, so.
I understand.
I think there's a couple of things, and we're really supposed to be talking about a voter challenge today, and, but I wanted to hear what you had to say, and I could see easily, it does not appear there was any purposely intent on it, but there are some, some issues that we as a board need to, to really look at and make a decision on as well, because a concern had, a challenge has been raised. And that's why I wanted to hear from who are the Hickeys, you know, does anyone else, anyone else have any concerns, or?
So we, we can rule.
Are you the spokesperson?
I'm sorry.
I mean, I guess, that's just, that's my goal, but yes.
Okay, okay, we'll just keep you as the spokesperson.
Madam Chair, if I, just ask our legal counsel, we could deny the challenge as moot, right?
Certainly.
Yeah. That, so, my view is, as, no surprise, exactly the same as Chip's, and that is, the issue before the board is a voter challenge. Obviously, the challenge, you know, frankly, if the Hickeys were here today, having not changed their address, it would be a no-brainer challenge to uphold, given the evidence in front of us, but given that they've, they've processed the change form, you know, again, that's the only reason I would deny it, is on that process ground, so I would move that we deny the challenge as moot at this juncture, with the idea that the, the other part of this conversation, to the extent we're even going to have it, is not germane to the challenge question.
I agree, I agree with that. Caleb, you're in.
I generally agree with what Alex just said. The normal circumstance of a challenge, Mr. Janus, has in the past withdrawn the challenge once the voter has updated their registration to the correct address, which has happened here. So now the only question really has not anything to do with challenging their voting from a particular address, but it has to do with how the vote was cast in October, which is a different subject.
It wasn't clear, mine was a motion to deny the challenge that I've made.
If that was your motion, I will second that motion.
You can have a seat, please.
Madam Chair, if I might, before we vote, Mr. and Mrs. Hickey, the, the discussion, I know you're not probably followers of election law, and the underlying law in Ohio is you vote from where you live at the time you vote, and that was the basis of Mr. Janus's challenge, which was an appropriate challenge at the time. You've updated your registration to indicate your new address in Anderson, and welcome to Anderson, by the way, I'm a resident of Anderson Township. And so we take these issues seriously, but also recognize that most people aren't aware of the, the fine issues of, of election law. And so, thank you for coming in today. Thank you, Mr. Janus, for, again, bringing this to our attention in issues like this. But from now on, if you move again, please update your registration, and issues like this won't occur. And if you have questions about that, you can always call the Board of Elections, and we'll help you out with that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And, and I would just like, before we call the vote, I would just like to add lessons to be learned, and I do not see that it, there was any intent to in any way be fraudulent in the way you, you cast your ballots. And I agree, you know, not everybody is able to synthesize the, the election laws as succinctly as other people can. Depends a lot on how often you've been voting, and, and I think when you look at that time period between the date you moved, October the 15th, and the date you voted, it was just a couple, you know, 15 days, but still, it's lessons to be learned. And I appreciate you both coming here, out of your busy schedule, to clarify things, and also to provide some information for all of us in this room, and all of those that may be viewing this, this meeting today. So we have a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? That, that vote carries. All right, thank you both. Next on our agenda, again, is a review of the November 2020 Presidential General Election Anomaly Report.
Madam Chair, so it's clear, the Hickeys are released from their subpoena at this point, so if you have to get the work or something.
You are free to go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I thought maybe they wanted to sit through the whole meeting.
Oh, well.
They're normal people, man.
All right. Ms. Boland?
Yes, in your packet you'll find two documents. One is a anomaly summary report of staff's follow-up. The other is a spreadsheet entitled anomaly report. The spreadsheet lists 120 voters. I think it's best to refer to them by their sequence number, coordinating sequence number that appears on their report. Staff reached out or attempted to contact all 120 voters. We were unable to reach 47 of them due to either the voter messages left for the voters, and the voters have not returned those phone calls to, to board staff, or that we simply didn't have a phone number or email address on file with those voters. So I think it's So I think it's staff's recommendation that for those 47 voters, we follow up with a letter issued today, instructing the voter to contact either the Deputy Director or myself before the next Board meeting. For those voters, we were able to reach the vast majority of them. The anomaly regarding their vote was that they cast both an absentee ballot and a provisional ballot. When we spoke to those voters, it sort of boiled down into several different categories as the reasons that that happened, that they took those actions. For example, many voters received either a notice through the mail or a phone call stating that their ballot had not been received at the Board, when in fact it had. During that election cycle, staff, this was brought to staff's attention, I believe it was, it was from third parties, campaigns, others, that the data they were getting just wasn't up to date, and they were sending mailers out to voters, telling them their ballot had not been received by the Board, when in fact they had. So when those voters received that notice, they then went to their polling place and voted provisionally. We also discovered there was an issue with our, with "Track Your Ballot" functionality in our website. If the voter was registered with a suffix, they had to enter that suffix in to the "Track My Ballot" field in order to get a result that their ballot had been received. So if someone was a junior or senior, they had to enter that in. If they did not, it would come up "No Results Found," and so those few voters then went to their polling place and voted provisionally. We are working with our website vendor to remove that requirement. So if the suffix isn't entered, it will give a listing of voters with the same first, last name, and date of birth will appear. We also had received word from several of the voters, they were concerned that the USPS would not deliver their ballot on time to the BOE, some first-time absentee ballots confused about the process. We did have some voters who had a defect on their identification envelopes, they were missing information, perhaps their signature, form of ID. The Board sends a letter to those voters, letting them know how to correct that defect by just simply providing it on the form and mailing it back. But we did have some voters, rather than mailing the form back, they went to their polling place and cast a provisional. And we did have a few voters who stated, due to their age, they, they simply had, had forgotten that they had already cast a ballot in the election. We did not discover, in our review, any instances where there was someone else attempting to cast a ballot in someone else's name. So all the voters that we were able to reach, it was that particular voter who, who cast a ballot by mail and then also voted provisionally. So we didn't have any instances, that was something we were looking for. You know, did someone else attempt to vote in, in that voter's name? So at this point, we would like to, staff would like to follow up with letters to the 47 we were unable to reach. There are five voters that I think, we think have a little special circumstances that we'd like to look a little further into. The first one is voter number 84. And when our staff administrator spoke to this voter, the voter stated, he said he, he did it to see if he could vote twice, with all the talk of fraud. He didn't see the harm in it, was his response to our administrator when they contacted him, as to reason, as to why he cast two ballots.
Didn't we have a situation like that before? Like, it was like a game?
Yes.
We did. We did. We had a voter who went to two different polling places on Election Day purposely, to see if he could have, yeah, two ballots counted.
Always going to be one or two every year.
Yes.
And then also voters 117, 118, 119, and 120. They were all a little different circumstances. One was a voter who voted early in person, twice, at the Board of Elections. Again, only one ballot was counted, but he did a, he cast ballots on two different dates. We would like to send a letter to that voter, as we do not have a phone number on file. Voter number 118 voted at two different polling locations on Election Day in Hamilton County. Again, we'd like to send a letter to that voter, as we do not have a phone number on file. Voter number 119 is that we received word from a family member that the voter does not live in Hamilton County and lives in New York. The ballot, the voter did request their ballot be mailed to New York. We do have, have a phone number for that voter, and she, the voter has not returned our, our message, so we'll be sending a letter. And then the last voter, voter number 120, voted early in Butler County, and in person at Butler County Board of Elections, and then voted provisionally on Election Day in Hamilton County. We do not have a phone number on file. I reached out to Butler County. They also do not have a phone number on file, so our recommendation is to send a letter.
I have a question. Is there a particular reason why we don't require a phone number or an email address, or is that something that's not, we're not allowed to do based on election laws?
It's not required under Ohio law that a voter provide a phone number and email address when registering to vote, or, but we do ask for it. It's listed as optional on both the absentee application, on the registration form, and something new is on the identification envelope when it's returned. So we did have a lot more voters than we normally do, providing that information, because the field is now on the identification envelope. But I don't, I don't.
But I know it's not required, but I, I think in this day and age, you would think most people would have either a land phone or a cellphone.
Yes. I think it's a matter that, what we hear from voters is many times they don't want to provide that information, because they don't want that information to be publicly available.
Which is understandable.
And once they provide it to us, it is publicly available under Ohio law.
And many don't want to be called for jury duty. That's been some of the, a lot of concerns as well. Just wondering.
Well, they just don't want to get political calls.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Every day, every hour, every day.
So, let me just back up a minute. So, on the tracker, it, because the first thing I was going to raise with these categories is what was the corrective action plan? What can we do, or what have we done to correct that so that doesn't occur, to minimize the risk of it occurring again? It's always going to occur again. Then, I do have to admit, there were tons of calls, people calling in here, as well as in various facilities and locations in the county, concerned that their ballot had not arrived, even though it didn't appear, or sometimes it did not appear, but they knew they had sent it out in plenty of time. So I think when you looked at all of the mass confusion that, and misinformation that was being communicated to the public, everyone was, seemed to be quite paranoid about the whole thing, not knowing what to do and what not to do. So I just think that, you know, we can just better educate our voters, continue to do what we did, to try to eliminate that. But I do like what you did for the first time voters confused about the process, just kind of get with them, and, and communicating with them what the correct, you know, process is. Now, the ones that you outlined for us today, there definitely needs to be a revisit of all of those individuals. How long would it take you and Sally to research those?
The 47 we were unable to reach, so the 47 we were unable to reach, that includes the five that, that have the, a little different circumstances. So, I mean, we could get the letters out probably as soon as tomorrow, tomorrow morning in the mail. And then our goal would be that they contact us before your next Board meeting on February 9th, so we can give you an update then.
So you would have that indicated in the letter, what, what the timeframe that they are expected to respond?
Correct. Correct.
And then we would discuss it further in our next meeting.
On February 9th. That's, that's what the staff is proposing.
I think that seems fair enough, even though it's just.
Yes, that's fine with me.
I know, but we were looking at, if we send it out tomorrow, and then our next meeting is the second week in February, is there no holidays or anything that would have the Post Office close, other than the normal turnaround time that's slower now with the Post Office than it historically has always been?
Yeah, so we would make sure the, that was out in the mail by the 20th, and ask for a response no later than February 5th, which is the Friday before your next Board meeting.
Okay. Good. That's what I wanted, just to make sure, the date that they were expected to respond was before the date that we were scheduled to meet.
Yes. Yes.
Just, just a quick comment. After every election, we have a list of voters that we look into who have both cast an AV and showed up at the polling place and wound up voting provisionally. That's fairly routine. This list is much larger than what we've typically seen in the past, and I pretty much just write that off to the fact that so many more people were voting by mail this time than has been true in the past, and probably many of them were doing that for the first time. And there are people who just really aren't, either don't have access, or don't have the expertise to go to our website and use the ballot tracker to figure out whether their ballot has been received and accepted. I, I do recall having gotten some questions from voters who looked at that on the website and saw that the ballot was received, but didn't see any indication that it had been approved for counting. And so they thought maybe there was some, still there was some problem with it, when in fact really there wasn't. It was just how it was, how our website was indicating it was confusing people, and that might be something we could look into.
We're, we're actually have been meeting with our website vendor. What, the message that appears when it's accepted is accepted for counting, and what confused voters is they wanted to know, well, was it counted? But we, you know, it's not counted until Election Night, so we couldn't update it prior to Election Night that it was counted. Then you have ballots that arrive after Election Day, but by the deadlines in order to count it in the certification. So we're, we've been working on that, Sally and I have, with our website vendor, and also.
We're making some changes in that wording, but we don't have a lot of flexibility with the current system that we have. But we think we have revised it to make a little more sense, and we will put that up in our, in our front box on the website for the next couple, next election. But we hope we might have a new VR system before November, and then we'll have more flexibility.
In fact, I remember looking at that myself. If I recall, what I saw was, is that a ballot had been received, but that didn't indicate that it was accepted for counting, and people were making that distinction. So hopefully, we can get that improved and resolved.
We did have a lot of feedback on that.
We did. There were a lot of, people were calling everywhere, calling me and everything, you know, even I did. I was concerned, because mine took forever, and I knew I had sent it out, and I'm like, okay, then it looks like I'm going to have to go and vote provisional, but I don't want to do that. So as long as we got it corrected. And when do you think that problem could be resolved?
We have, we're making some tweaks of it in time before the May election, the, the next election. And then we hope to be able to make additional improvements with the new voter registration system, that we hope to have implemented by November, and we were going to just talk about that under Other Business.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? Okay. Next on the agenda is, make sure I'm staying called up, Precinct Realignment, Blue Ash, the community of Blue Ash.
Yes. The City of Blue Ash, at the end of 2020, notified Board staff that they had realigned, or redrawn their ward lines. If you recall, they also, they had just redrawn their ward lines, I believe it was two years ago, or maybe just a year ago? Yeah. And then they, they've redrawn them again. So that requires the Board to redraw our precinct lines in order to conform with the new ward lines. So in your packet is, Operations Department has put together a proposal, again, to conform the precinct lines to the new ward lines, staying within census block, and trying to evenly distribute the number of registered voters in the precincts as possible, without creating any split precincts between various voting districts. So we have basically the current ward changes. The current ward lines are indicated on the first map by a straight line, and then the changes by the dashes. We try to make this have the least impact on voters as possible. There is only about, about 20% of the voters in Blue Ash will have their polling location changed based on these realignments. There's one polling location in the new precinct 2C. We believe the current polling location will now not be large enough to handle the number of voters in 2C. So our polling locations department is working, looking at some hotels in the area to see if we can move that location. And then if the Board approves these changes, we will send a notice now to every registered voter in Blue Ash, informing them of the changes, and then we'll send another notice prior to their next election, which is in November.
Oh, that was my concern, how you're going to be communicating in a timely manner to the voters, and even, let's say, even though you respond next week, that still doesn't give them, they'll forget, you know, many times.
Right. So we thought it was best to send them a notice now, when the changes are occurring, and then a notice again in October, which would be, you know, 30 days prior to their next election in November. As of now, it does not look like Blue Ash will have an election in May. It's like their next election will be in, in November.
And, and a question as well. Does the community of Blue Ash have the ability or have a website where they can also notify or contact their voters? Do you know? I mean, because as much communication I think is, that we can give them, they should be able to receive.
Yeah. I'm, I mean, the City of Blue Ash does. I'm not sure what's, how much communication the city has done in notifying their residents, but.
We can check with them, see if they have an ability to put it up on their site.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. I think that would be helpful. Okay. So now, Blue, Blue Ash will have multiple, okay, looks like.
Yeah, same number of precincts. Didn't change the number of precincts, it's just adjusting the precinct lines to conform with the, with the ward lines.
Okay.
I'll move approval of the, the redrawn Blue Ash election map.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? That motion carries. Thank you much. Next on our agenda is the Personnel Issues, update of our organizational chart.
Yes. In your, in your packet, you will find an updated organizational chart. Point out the changes. One is in the IT Department. Staff has recommended that we move one of the IT manager positions into a newly created Chief Information Officer, with Bill Mcjoint taking that position. And then we are moving one of the positions from the Registration Department and creating a new position of Digital Communications Manager, and that would be a new staff appointment that we'll handle a little later in the, on the agenda. The other major change to the organizational chart is changing the title and the job description for our PEO Recruiter. That position has evolved much over the years, and so we would like to change that title to PEO Training and Outreach Supervisor. And then we can get to these staff assignments a little later in the agenda. Sally, did I miss anything else on updates for the organizational chart?
Nope, I think you've got them.
Question, on the, the new position, which is outreach, can you define a little bit more? Is that the way, those are the concerns I had raised when I first came on board, that we were not going out into the community, we were not really communicating the community and, and using our resources that were out there to train the trainer? Is that what this person will be responsible for doing?
Correct. And that's what this person and, there's two, a Democrat and Republican, had started to do, and, and basically not just recruiting poll workers, but other outreach to the community. And so they've been doing that the past year, and we wanted to formalize it in their job description, as well as in their title. So that's what, what this is, this is doing.
Good. I think that's needed. And perhaps what we'll see in the future, hopefully we don't have as much false information or getting out like we had to deal with in 2020, but hopefully we'll see less provisionals being voted, people voting provisional, hopefully. Fairly. Okay, go ahead, Sherri.
And then, do you want to make a motion on adopting the updated organizational chart?
Were those, were those the only changes?
To the organizational chart, correct.
I'll move adoption of the new organizational chart. Second.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? That motion carries.
Also on the updated job descriptions, would you like a motion there as well? I'll move adoption of the updated job descriptions as presented by staff.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? That motion carries. Next is a full-time staff appointments. Sally, I think you're going to address this there.
Yes, we'd like to submit two names of, two new Democratic staff members for approval. The appointment of Amira Savani to digital communications manager in the I T department, and Amira is here. And the appointment of Hamana Neville to administrative associate in the administration department.
Congratulations, ladies.
I'll go ahead and move appointment of those two new full-time staff members and say welcome aboard.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? That motion is carried. Again, a big congratulations and welcome to the team.
Yes.
Okay, next, holidays schedule.
You have in your packet, section 6.1 holidays of the board's personnel policy manual. It's been the board's past practice to follow the same holiday schedule as the Board of County Commissioners. The county commissioners have adopted Juneteenth as a observed holiday, and so we're recommending the board do the same.
I'll move approval of the holiday schedule update to include Juneteenth as a holiday.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? That motion is carried. Next, we have salary adjustments.
Yes, the Board of County Commissioners also approved a 3% increase in our salary line item. And the deputy director and I are recommending that that's a 3% across the board, cost of living increase for staff, retroactive to the first pay period of 2021.
Okay, okay. Need a motion?
I'll move approval of the salary adjustments. Gladly do that.
Second.
Any more discussion? I just think it's, we should continue to stay right with, you know, the current economy, and that way, we can retain our, our staff, which is important. So all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, we have a resolution, remote ballot marking device and accessible sample ballots. Who's going to discuss that or give us an update on that?
I'll give you an update. This is a resolution authorizing the deputy director or myself to execute a contract for a remote ballot marking device and accessible sample ballots. This is with Democracy Live. We've had a contract for this for several years. It expired at the end of 2020. So this would be renewing that contract to be able to keep those services. Those services entail the PDF sample ballots that are posted on our website for those to be accessible. So voters who use a reader, that type of technology on their home computer, or are visually impaired are able to view the sample ballot. And then the remote ballot marking device is something similar. Voters with a qualifying disability can ask to have a ballot emailed to them that they can use, again, with their home software in order to vote the ballot with their computer, print it, and then mail it to the board. So again, this is services we've been offered. It's just the contract expired and it's time to renew.
I'll move adoption of resolution number 21 dash 001.
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? That motion carries. And next, we have other business.
Yes, a few things as we mentioned before. It's our intent to put out an R F P for a new voter registration system, hopefully by the end of this month. It is a big task, but our current voter registration system was implemented in 2004. And we think the software was probably designed in the late 90s, Bill. Yes. It's been limping along, and it's, it's time. So, you know, we'll put out the request for proposals, again, hopefully by the end of this month. It's our goal to go through the selection process over the spring and, and come back to the board with a recommendation on a new system in June to be implemented over the summer months. It's an aggressive schedule. We got a little behind because of running the presidential election during the pandemic last year. We had hoped to gone out, go out to bid last year. That just didn't happen. So a little bit behind, but we want to get that out, hopefully by the end of this month.
I think we have to be very prompt with that, and I agree. Because we've gotten a little behind, and whatever we can do is catch up. But we should be very aggressive in doing that as well as making sure that we select the right software that's going to continue to move us forward.
Yes.
Is that software something that we've looked at and learned when we've gone to some of the Secretary of State training sessions, or is this?
Yes, yes. Actually, there was one, one vendor, voter registration vendor, who has been at conference, and we've met with at conference back when we still went in-person to conferences. And that vendor was 10X. So we have seen their new system and demos at conferences. But we'll, we'll put out the R F P and see who else responds.
Okay.
There's also a new system that just went into effect January 1st called B O E File. It allows local campaigns to file electronically. So this was something that came through legislation from the General Assembly, and the Secretary of State actually developed the software system for this. So we are going to start promoting and really have our campaign finance department issued a notice about, to the campaigns for their ability to do this. And our last notice to file pocket that went out, and we're currently looking at doing some social media posts and, and getting the word out. And we'll also send that to both of the headquarters of both parties to help sort of spread the word because we think it'll be, once the campaigns get used to it, we think it'll be a really good tool for them. You know, it's supposedly, in theory, would eliminate any mathematical errors because the system is doing the calculations for them. And then it also is more transparent because when candidates or campaigns file electronically, that means all of their reports will be on our website in a, in a method that's searchable. So we thought this was also a good time, since those that'll file electronically, beginning with the first reports of 2021, we're going to start, those campaigns that still file by hard copy, we're going to also post those to our website. And that would begin with the, the pre-primary in 2021, right?
Pre-primary.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, Sheri, that's the campaign finance reports that you're referring to?
Yes, yes.
That's great.
Yes. And just lastly, just a reminder that our next meeting is February 9th, but then our organizational meeting is March 2nd. So that's the first Tuesday of the month rather than the second Tuesday of the month because state law requires the board to reorganize between March 2nd and March 6th.
Same time, 8:30?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything else?
Do I have Sally? We have, lots of people are in checking petitions, mayoral petitions. So we're assuming we will have a mayoral primary in the city of Cincinnati.
I was going to say, I figured that. Absolutely. Okay. And when they're checking their petitions, is there, how's that going? Is there a way that they can, we can improve in that area, you know, so that?
I think.
Because I've heard there's been a little glitches, but still, you know.
I'm not aware of any glitches. I know that, you know, one thought, because we, we've had over 60 candidates pull for council petitions. Granted, maybe half will actually file. Over the summer, we might need to add on some additional public terminals in order, you know, to accommodate that. But as far as filing for mayor, I haven't heard of any problems.
For mayor, mainly the, the council races, where there's more people coming in and out.
Yeah, I think so far, we've had enough.
Yeah.
But then when you look at it, just because you pull petition doesn't mean you're going to file. You know, everybody's pulling positions, but that, what, what, what really matters is who actually is filing and counting their petitions.
We did have the third mayoral candidate file. We, the petitions haven't been checked yet, or they're being checked now?
Yeah, yeah. The third candidate's petition that has actually filed or currently being checked.
Okay, okay. All right. Anything else?
It's all from staff.
Any, we have our Secretary of State, Kenny here. Want to step to the podium? You have anything else to give us, any information from our Secretary of State?
I do. Happy New Year to everyone. It was a good seeing you.
Happy New Year to you.
I did want to say congratulations to the two staff members who drafted the petition. Hamilton County Board of Elections, Digital Media, definitely one of the best. Definitely the best in my region. And others do look to your pages as like models for them to replicate. So your team does a fantastic job with that, and excited to see how you'll take that position, the content that you publish. Also, in regards to outreach, I think it's, it was a great move to have those positions updated. I know that your staff members that work and then have been out in the community with them, and they do a fantastic job speaking with voters and getting correct information to them. In my smaller counties, I'm the outreach person for the Board of Elections.
Oh, my goodness.
Great to know that you have two of them. We have been getting questions from campaigns in regards to the new online local finance reporting. I've been speaking with Deb and Alicia. I got one yesterday that I talked to them about this morning. And I want to say that if a candidate or a campaign is in an office that makes less than $5,000 a year and intends to spend less than $2,000, they still have to come in, as of now, to submit the waiver? Okay, so Deb, confirm that. So I think that is getting worked out on the website, though. And we have more information to come. I know that it's something that's just up and running, and I will take that concern to Columbus and let them know that. Also, on our website, if you just go to the Ohio Secretary of State's website and go to the contact our office link, it comes up with the email addresses and online submission portal for individuals who have questions or were concerned. So that's all I have. I know that as local campaigns are being created, we will continue to get in towards parts of that. So anything I can do to be helpful with, please let me know. Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you. You've always been immensely helpful. I have one question. I just thought about this. Is, is there opportunities or can they learn on the website? You know, if there's a new campaign finance person that's taken over, how they can learn so that they will have less issues related to how to file the reports?
Yeah, I know the entire, like, the handbook, if you will, is on our Secretary of State's website. In regards to courses for campaign finance, I don't know if there's something done on a more local level or not. Do you know of any? I know that in like Montgomery County, the two, the two political parties have like treasure courses.
Right, right.
But yeah, and I, I don't believe anything from our office, but that's a suggestion I can make.
Just a thought.
Yeah, no, thank you.
I'm hearing more new people coming in, stepping in, as others are retiring and stepping down. And people are just a little nervous about it because they want to do the right thing and follow the election laws as well.
Definitely. I will let you know what they say in regards to that.
Okay, even if it was, even if it was a link or something. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny.
Madam Chair.
Kayla.
I do have one item that I'd like to bring up. Way back in August, we, I brought up a motion. It was voted approved three to one to investigate the cost and feasibility of drop boxes. That subject, as we all know, became quite the political football through the course of this election season and resulted in litigation both at the state and federal level. And a directive from the Secretary of State's office that basically stopped any further investigation of that particular subject prior to the election. Where we stand, as I understand it now, is that first of all, the federal litigation was, was dropped, was withdrawn. That directive has essentially expired because it pertained to the 2020 election. And at the state level, we had a ruling from Court of Appeals in Columbus that basically said that boards of elections do have the ability to consider installing additional drop boxes. It's a practical matter. In a year like this, a municipal election year, voter participation is going to be significantly lower than it was just past November. So I don't necessarily think that there's any good reason why we need to pursue the installation of any boxes. But I would like to follow through on the investigation of the cost and feasibility. We got some bids, as I recall. And one thing I don't think we really looked at in that process was having seen a lot of discussion about drop boxes, it seems important to me that any drop boxes that we put out there have fire suppression capability. I don't know if our one up front does, but I've seen some indication that you can get such a thing, and there've been a couple of instances of people trying to set boxes on fire. So I'd like to reiterate my motion that we, that we investigate the cost and the feasibility, meaning looking at the security aspects and so forth of installing those boxes, not so that we can do that immediately, but just so that in the future, we have that information available to us at some point when it might be appropriate to do that. So I'd like to make that motion.
You know, I, I agree because we were under fire before, and everything was rush, rush. And we, and some of the paperwork or requests kind of sat somewhere until it was, seemed to me it was delay in getting response. So this way, we can set up a process with a timeframe to it, a timely manner. It doesn't hurt to research. I'm a research person. I don't see, you know, getting anywhere moved forward unless you research. So I think that's something that we should look into. Thoughts?
Kayla, what's different from this motion than your other one that passed? That's what I'm, I guess what I'm wondering.
Nothing other than that I want to resume working on it. We stopped any further work once that directive came out. And of course, the election is now passed. We did, as I say, get cost estimates from manufacturers. I don't know that the fire suppression piece of it was there. And, but we didn't do anything in terms of looking at security and the feasibility of actual locations. So I'm, I'm just asking that we now proceed to do those pieces so that we have that information available to the board should we face a situation in the future where it's appropriate. Now, I would add, by the way, well, I think we, our board did a pretty good job of dealing with the early voting chaos that we all had to face this year. That was probably to some degree unique, given the COVID situation. We did, as we all know, have some real traffic problems around people trying to bring their absentee ballots back here. I think the fact, the idea of having additional drop boxes would have alleviated some of that problem. And so I don't know if it's a midterm year or a next presidential, but I still think there's some merit in considering the additional drop boxes. So I'd like to move forward with what my original motion suggested.
Well, I can tell you, when I saw how we were making our own drop boxes ourselves, and people were a little reluctant because, you know, they didn't see a drop box, but they saw people, staff, even though they had our, our, our B O E equipment and stuff on, just wondering if that was really a legitimate person there. So it would give some legitimacy to whatever the outcome is. I don't see any harm in researching it. And that was sort of what was, as I recall, was part of that original motion as well. And the intent, intent is basically to look at the feasibility of it and also be able to, in a timely manner, look at the other systems, other polling locations in the United States that may have the same system. And I do know that there are quite a few, and they're doing very well with them. So to look at the pros and So to look at the pros and cons and then make a decision from there.
Yep. This is an issue of, of obviously public concern and it's been politicized, obviously, to a great degree for that reason. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to second the motion or I support it. I just, I think if this decision is going to occur, it should occur from the Secretary of State's office and the board's ought to prepare accordingly. So the issue certainly has been brought to the attention of the public and I think to, to ask our staff to move forward on something that seemingly may never occur and, and opens up this, this issue again that frankly created such angst, especially after we conducted such an incredible, an election here in Ohio and in Hamilton County, just doesn't make any sense to me. So respectfully, I won't be supporting the motion.
Just to your point, the primary reason I'm bringing this up now is that I was hopeful that, you know, now that we're past the 2020 election, this could be investigated without it becoming such a controversial political issue and political football. I, you know, I just think that there's some merit in looking at it and this is a much calmer point in time. I don't expect to see any of that kind of controversy in this election cycle. So part of my thinking was now's a good time to look at that one, it's not a political controversial issue.
I think we need to take the politics out of it and look at what we can do to continue to improve the voting process in our county. And I'm, I'm always one to think about the people, not the politics. And I would second the motion. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Anyone abstaining?
What's our timeframe on the two-two vote? I can't remember. It's been so long since we've had one.
I believe it's 14 days.
Very good. I'll get my submission in sooner than that.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Anything else? Any other discussions? And again, I just, I always say our role is to keep the politics out of this and to do what's right for the people and what we can do to smooth the process and make it easier for our voters to cast their ballots. Okay.
I'll move to adjourn, Madam Chair. I've got 11, 10 o'clock, so I'm not looking to rush it along, but unless there's other business, I'll move to adjourn.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstaining?
Thank you.
That motion carries. Bye.